Would everyone please sign in? Commissioners, please sign in.
Marcus, Marcus. Do you want to do the prayer? Joe's not here, do you want to do the prayer?
Sure.
I haven't heard from Gray. Oh yeah, sixteen.
Got sixteen present.
I'll go ahead and call it over.
I'd like to call this meeting to order as Jefferson County Board of Commissioners regular quarterly voting session. This is a voting session, so it'll be just a tad different. And Mr. Frank, call the roll.
We have sixteen members present, five absent.
We have sixteen present, five absent. We have a quorum. Would y'all please stand for the prayer and the president allegiance. Uh, Mr. Marcus Reed will be offering the prayer.
Father, we come into your presence with thanksgiving and praise. We thank you that you have blessed us to live in such a great county. Lord, I would ask each one of us to take a look at ourselves, examine ourselves, and always remember that integrity and honesty, truthfulness are important to the role that we have in this county as commissioners. Lord, I pray for the citizens of the county, and I thank you that they show up, whether they agree or disagree with the way we vote. I thank you that they care enough to be interested in their county. Whereas things throughout the world seem to be in chaos, one thing I know for sure, and I do believe, that you're on your throne and you're directing every movement of us as humanity. And I just thank you, I praise you, and I thank you for your son, Jesus Christ. In his name I pray, amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank everybody for coming out tonight. We've had a little inclement weather that's really slowed down progress, so appreciate everybody bearing with us. Next on the agenda is approval corrections of the agenda. Anyone? Not hearing any, we'll move right along.
Ms. Chairman, Ms. Chairman?
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
We have a motion on the floor to suspend the rule. Is there a second? We have a second. Sir.
Do we need to vote on it first?
We probably need to know what it is before we go vote.
I'm wanting to add to new business under item B, discussion of the addition of a C3 zone.
Under B?
Yeah, under other resolutions.
Other resolutions? And what was that again?
Discussion of adding a C3 zone to the Jefferson County zoning regulations.
All right, this is for discussion. You have a motion on the floor, it's been second, to suspend the rules and add a discussion for a C3. Question or comment? This is a vote to suspend the rule. If you are for suspending the rule, vote yes. If not, vote no. Ten yes, five no, does not pass for lack of eleven. Next you have on the agenda approval of minutes. Yes. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Second? Recently, I was having a conversation with my students about looking around for things that needed to be done within the classroom for improvement, and a seven-year-old, soon to be eight, noted that my classroom doesn't have sprinklers. We are not able to get a student in a wheelchair out of my room if we couldn't leave the main entrance. We'd have to climb out and over a nineteen fifty-eight radiator. My students cannot do that, and they cannot help. I'm responsible for twenty-two students in a fire. I am not willing to pay that. We need to do something as a citizenry, as a funding commission, it is time for you to do something, put us back on the agenda. I'm a voter living locally with my affected taxing jurisdiction, and I'm asking you to approve the extension of this wheel tax. My family, we own three vehicles. My family is also now growing into grandkids that will be at Jefferson Elementary School, so I am very much invested. We've already put this into our family budget, and we're willing to do that. We will count the cost and make sure that our needs are met. Will you do the same for Jefferson Elementary School?
Thank you. Next, we have Taylor Hackbarth.
Taylor Hackbarth, I live at seven sixty-four Lakewood Drive, Jefferson City. Mrs. Campbell, that was a perfect introduction. I'm a parent of students at Jefferson Elementary School, here for basically the same reason she spoke for. Took a small sampling and created a petition of parents in the area. What I hear from this commission is there's no support to fix this school. It's here, and I'll gladly leave this with you, and you guys can contact every single person that signed it. Please put it on the agenda. It's making our kids sick, and it is not safe, and this commission is being very irresponsible by ignoring the problem. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Sabrina Thomas.
Hello, again, my name is Sabrina Thomas. I live at seven twelve Hart Road in Dandridge. I was here at the last work session, and I just want to reiterate that I am advocating for a new Jefferson Elementary School. I sat here in that meeting, and I listened to Mrs. Gass give a report about how the property values will be increasing this year. So, in addition to what Mrs. Campbell said about the tax, wheel tax, I would like to suggest that the tax rate remain at two dollars and thirty cents, and that way you can generate additional revenue in order to pay for a new Jefferson Elementary School. Renovation and the Ibbotson Plan are not viable options. And had something been done about this prior to COVID, it would have cost our county a lot less money, about ten million less than what it's going to be this time. But please, put it on the agenda, let's get this building done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kristen DePue.
Hi, I'm Kristen DePue, twelve thirty-seven Gay Street, Dandridge. And I'm coming tonight as the chairman of the GOP Women of Jefferson County. On January the thirtieth, I'd like to invite everyone to our meeting. We are having the people who are candidates on the Republican ballot on the March primary to come and to our meeting, and they're going to introduce themselves. And it's a time for meet and greet. It's not a big debate or anything like that, it's just a time to put a face with a name. And we would like to invite everybody, all the candidates have been contacted, and there's been a good response. And so we expect a lot of people, and this is for everybody, not just women, guys are invited too. And we hope that we have a lot of people there, and a lot of people can come out and meet our candidates. It's just a simple invitation, January the thirtieth at six o'clock in this courtroom, and we hope that you guys will be there.
Thank you. Next, we have James Nolan.
James Nolan, seven fourteen Maguire Road, New Market, Tennessee. I'm talking about the wheel tax. I think it should be allowed to expire because you already got twenty-five dollars on there, which is bringing in revenue and stuff. And Jefferson County has sold how many hundreds of home permits, which will be generating tax dollars for the county? And we've already had a twenty twenty-three property tax increase, and for twenty-four, they're reevaluating, which is definitely going to raise somewhat. And people have had a bad through inflation, Bidenomics, or whatever you want to call it, and I think it's time, why should we keep taxing everybody to death? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Tina Ball.
I'm Tina Ball, I live at twelve sixty West Highway twenty-five seventy. And I'm here about the new mine. You know, we first started talking about this mine, it wasn't a mine, it was land improvement. And then it goes in, and they build, and they build, and they, they're tearing up the land and hauling rock. Now they want to put a rock crusher in there, and they're saying this is not a mine. We hear this daily. I spoke to someone many times. I have photos of what they put in for a wastewater treatment for mine. I called and spoke to him, I hear, I hear all, over and over again, you need to go speak to Mr. Wally, he's a nice man. Well, he's not a nice man because he's ruining our area. Let's see, it's decreasing the property value? The dust is horrendous. You can, at times, you can stand in the road and watch cars disappear into the dust, you can't even see the taillights. I've sit on my deck and watched the dust come across the top and into my backyard. I can taste it, I can smell it. The noise is nonstop, seven days a week, sunup till after nine o'clock at night. The blasting is, you never know. I mean, we get woken up seven thirty, our whole house is shaking, it feels like it's coming off the foundation. You know, this is, this is not a good fit for our area, and we're, we're put up with it, you know, for so far, two years. But, you know, there's children in the school, they breathe this dust. I was told that the dust is twenty times more potent than coal dust, that it generates your lungs. So, you know, we're not happy with this, and we're hoping that you guys will vote for the people in the area. I was told that, that there would never be a mine there by one of the commissioners. We were told there'd be, never be a rock crusher by one of the commissioners, but the state of Tennessee and the EPA already have it considered as a mine, even though Dandridge tells us it's not a mine. So, it's just ruining our community, our lives, our health. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Brian Asbury.
I'm Brian Asbury, I live at one one two two West Dumplin Valley Road. I'm here to read for a couple people that couldn't be here tonight about the mine. This one is from Jeffrey McMahon. He says, "To the planning committee of Jefferson, I would like to thank you for reading this email for me tonight, at the night meeting. My name is Jeffrey McMahon, and I live at thirteen eighty-two Alberta Jones with my wife, Kelsey, and three young daughters. I'm a disabled veteran with PTSD and other medical conditions, one of which prevents me from speaking with you tonight in person. But I would like to object to the permits for blasting in the rock quarry on twenty-five seven. It is effect, it has an effect on my mental health. For example, if I'm in bed some mornings and they blast, sometimes it sets in my PTSD symptoms due to combat experience. Or if I'm sitting on the couch holding one of my small children, and the blast is, it really makes things uncomfortable when that happens. There's no warning or anything about the boom, and it rattles the windows and shakes the house. It sometimes leads to restless nights and agitation mentally and emotionally. I appreciate your time." I got one, I'm reading for some, for another people, Steve Tomberello and Sandra Tomberello, they live in, right just west of the rock quarry. "My wife and I purchased a home with twenty-two acres located on thirteen sixty-nine West Highway twenty-five seventy, Dandridge. We have invested several hundred thousand dollars remodeling the house to build our dream retirement home. Unfortunately, a year after the operations, our slice of heavens has been removed by nonstop harvesting of rock. Whaley operates seven days a week from seven AM to nine PM. Their operation is extremely noisy and the constant jackhammering and use of explosives. The exploding shakes our house to the point pictures and mirrors have fallen off the walls. Dust clouds cloud our home and automobile deals. Our dog is petrified by the loud explosions and rattling of the house. We can no longer sit on our porch and enjoy what used to be a serene and beautiful environment. The vegetation along the property line between the property, the quarry, is dying, and many of the trees are dying off. We are now considering selling our home, but most likely have a difficult time finding a buyer that wants to live in a construction zone. The noise and the dust have damaged the value of our property and ability to sell. We are faced with the prospect of the planning commission considering rezoning to allow rock crusher. Our property and the surrounding properties are zoned for agricultural, not commercial. This is outrageous. Sendly, Stephen and Sandra Tomberello."
Thank you, sir, for speaking for your neighbors. Next, we have Harold Moore.
Mr. Asbury covered a lot of things that I have on the list here that I was going to mention. We have more or less a quarry in Piedmont, Tennessee, and it's on Ag Zone property. Pretty much amounts to quarry. I've heard it called a site prep. I don't know so much about that. They've got a tub crusher they're running, they shoot rock, and they produce it for aggregates to be used in construction. That amounts to a quarry. A rock farm involves limestone and other ornamental stone that's queried by mechanical means or other means. But what we have is a quarry. It's causing a lot of problems. It's operating under severe county regulations because Jefferson County doesn't have any, that's what I've been told. But we've got an unusual amount of gravel in the highway, causes problems with windshields. I know of four springs that have gone dry. I know of the creeks have been affected, and I've watched Dumplin Creek run muddy from that point to the river when it's rained really heavy in the past. And there's no sense in it. You have good neighbor, good neighbors have good fences with an extra dose of consideration. So, but y'all need to get your zoning together and come down there and look at our hole.
Thanks, sir.
I shot rock for twenty years, and I've shot a lot of quarries, and I know some people know I have, I know what a quarry is, and I know it's not zoned right. Y'all need to get your shit together and do something.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Melina Rogers.
My name is Melina Greg Rogers. I'm a lifelong resident of the Piedmont community, only leaving when my deceased husband was an army, in the army. I live on West Dumplin Valley Road directly across from twenty-five seventy Asheville Highway, from the property owned by Whaley Construction, where the zoning committee newly termed the property as a rock farm. The only definition I could find for rock farm was when chemicals are added to rocks and pressure is introduced to the, to produce gems. This is not a rock farm. I would like to ask county commission to vote against the approval by the zoning committee to allow Whaley Construction to put a rock crusher on the property located at twenty-five seventy Fridge Mill. When asked how Whaley Construction was allowed to have a rock quarry without the knowledge of the neighbors, the zoning committee commented that it was not a quarry because there's no rock crusher on site, and the owners were just clearing land that they owned.
I'm Brian Asbury. I live at 1122 West Dumplin Valley Road. I'm here to read for a couple of people that couldn't be here tonight about the mine. This one is from Jeffrey McMahon. He says, "To the planning committee of Jefferson, I would like to thank you for reading this email for me tonight, at the night meeting. My name is Jeffrey McMahon, and I live at 1382 Alberta Jones with my wife, Kelsey, and three young daughters. I am a disabled veteran with PTSD and other medical conditions, one of which prevents me from speaking with you tonight in person. But I would like to object to the permits for blasting in the rock quarry on 2570. It is effect, it has an effect on my mental health. For example, if I'm in bed some mornings and they blast, sometimes it sets in my PTSD symptoms due to combat experience. Or if I'm sitting on the couch holding one of my small children and the blast is, it really makes things uncomfortable when that happens. There's no warning or anything about the boom, and it rattles the windows and shakes the house. It sometimes leads to restless nights and agitation mentally and emotionally. I appreciate your time." I got one, I'm reading for some, for another people, Steve Tomberello and Sandra Tomberello. They live in, right, just west of the rock quarry. "My wife and I purchased a home with 22 acres located on 1369 West Highway 2570, Dandridge. We have invested several hundred thousand dollars remodeling the house to build our dream retirement home. Unfortunately, a year after the operations, our slice of heavens has been removed by nonstop harvesting of rock. Whaley operates seven days a week from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Their operation is extremely noisy and the constant jackhammering and use of explosives. The exploding shakes our house to the point pictures and mirrors have fallen off the walls. Dust clouds cloud our home and all the models. Our dog is petrified by the loud explosions and rattling of the house. We can no longer sit on our porch and enjoy what used to be a serene and beautiful environment. The vegetation along the property line between the property, the quarry, is dying, and many of the trees are dying off. We are now considering selling our home, but most likely have a difficult time finding a buyer that wants to live in a construction zone. The noise and the dust have damaged the value of our property and ability to sell. We are faced with the prospect of the planning commission considering rezoning to allow rock crusher. Our property and the surrounding properties are zoned for agricultural, not commercial. This is outrageous." Sendley, Stephen, and Sandra Tomberello.
Thank you, sir, for speaking for your neighbors. Next, we have Harold Moore.
Mr. Asbury covered a lot of things that I have on the list here that I was going to mention. We have more or less a quarry in Piedmont, Tennessee, and it's on ag zone property. It pretty much amounts to quarry. I've heard it called a site prep. I don't know so much about that. They've got a tub crusher they're running. They shoot rock, and they produce it for aggregates to be used in construction. That amounts to a quarry. A rock farm involves limestone and other ornamental stone that's queried by mechanical means or other means. But what we have is a quarry. It's causing a lot of problems. It's operating under severe county regulations because Jefferson County doesn't have any. That's what I've been told. But we've got an unusual amount of gravel in the highway, causes problems with windshields. I know of four springs that have gone dry. I know of the creeks have been affected, and I've watched Dumplin Creek run muddy from that point to the river when it's rained really heavy in the past. And there's no sense in it. Good neighbor, good neighbors have good fences with an extra dose of consideration. So, but y'all need to get your zoning together and come down there and look at our hole.
Thanks, sir.
I shot rock for 20 years, and I've shot a lot of quarries, and I know some people know I have. I know what a quarry is, and I know it's not zoned right. Y'all need to get your shit together and do something.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Melina Rogers.
My name is Melina Greg Rogers. I'm a lifelong resident of the Piedmont community, only leaving when my deceased husband was an army, in the Army. I live on West Dumplin Valley Road, directly across from 2570 Asheville Highway, from the property owned by Whaley Construction, where the zoning committee newly termed the property as a rock farm. The only definition I could find for rock farm was when chemicals are added to rocks and pressure is introduced to the, to produce gems. This is not a rock farm. I would like to ask county commission to vote against the approval by the zoning committee to allow Whaley Construction to put a rock crusher on the property located at 2570 Fridge Mill. When asked how Whaley Construction was allowed to have a rock quarry without the knowledge of the neighbors, the zoning committee commented that it was not a quarry because there's no rock crusher on site, and the owners were just clearing land that they owned. Now Jefferson County wants to approve a crusher at the site, which is contradictory to the explanation previously given. The blast from the land clearing has rattled my dishes and my cabinets, scared me and my grandchildren, and cracked mine and my neighbors' foundations. When one blast was so hard it made my heart beat become irregular, I went over to confront the foreman by waiting at the gate. Alex Vandergriff, operations manager, informed me that a third party did the blasting, and it was within state regulations. At that time, they agreed to put a seismograph on my property, but later said it cannot be done because the two on site were permanently installed. I realized there's more dump truck traffic, which is hauling rock to the Kodak site, which I understand was being used for Whaley Construction projects. Now I learned that Jefferson County is missing out on sales tax from the sale of this rock. Is that true, or will point of sale play a role in the possible gains to Jefferson County? In my opinion, dump truck traffic is much safer than the possible inexperienced individuals hauling rock and pickup trucks and trailers. Also, Whaley does not properly wet down operations and works seven days a week at all hours of the day, morning and night. The noise and dust is really bad, but when, but will become totally intolerable when the introduction of the rock crusher. It seems that our zoning committee has a blatant disregard for longtime residents of the Piedmont community lately. Please vote no to the rock crusher."
Thank you. Next, we have Dale Medes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I made a few comments a couple of weeks ago at the meeting, and I wanted to follow up on those this evening. And talked a little bit about my family history there and got to thinking about all the changes I've seen in Piedmont in my lifetime. And it came to mind that in my lifetime, I've seen Piedmont go from a three-room schoolhouse that didn't have restrooms now, but had outhouses, to this complex that's Piedmont School now. That's a lot of change. And as a matter of interest, my grandfather donated that property that that school was on to the county to use as long as they used it for a schoolhouse. But the reason I mention school is because of the kids. Piedmont was absolutely a fantastic place to grow up. When I was growing up there, I thought it was the most boring place on earth. John Neal, you can appreciate this. There wasn't much exciting happening unless the cows got out or something, you know? But it was a wonderful place to grow up. And we're blessed to have six-year-old triply grandsons that live there. And as a matter of fact, the other morning, there was one of those blasts when they were getting ready to go to school, shut the house, and they thought it was an earthquake. That's got to be scary for a six-year-old. And that house is 125 years old, and I wonder just how much shaking it can take. But it's really troubling to me that those boys aren't going to be able to grow up in the same environment that I did and that their dad did. And I think I can say with 100% assurance that there's not a person in this room that wants that quarry in their neighborhood. And I'd like for you to all ask yourselves, would you be happy with it if that were across the road from your house, and you were listening to the trucks, the jake brakes, the backup alarms, the hydraulic hammers putting up with the dust and having a blast shake your house? If you can't say that you'd be happy with that, then it would be absolutely wrong for you to impose that on somebody else. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dale. Next, moving right along to probably what y'all looking forward to, Clara C. Collinsworth.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm Clara Collinsworth, and I live at 3151 Blueberry Drive in New Market. And I'm just here to support Robert Brunner with the rezoning of his property for commercial.
Thank you. Next, we have Debbie Self.
Hi, my name is Debbie Self, and I live at 172 Barbara Road in Strawberry Plains. We moved here about seven years ago, and we moved from a similarly rural area in the north. And we moved here because we moved here because everything of rural life brings. We found that we had a great community of neighbors that came and helped each other and stood behind each other during things. This community has been plagued with situations that have caused the sense of community to be questioned and to do question itself. No one wants to be told what to do with their own property when they bought and paid for it. But when that want impacts negatively on neighbors, we must be a community that is strong in its resolve to retain our heartbeat. Most of the issues that have been recent that I have noted, a rock farm, a battery farm, a slaughterhouse, a rehab center, additional buildings on someone's property, have all come from a lack of, are having good zoning resolutions. I, for one, I speak for my husband too, so count two, really like living in this community and don't want it to become the wasteland of a large corporation that sees us as a zoning, and our zoning resolutions as easy game. I don't want it to become an area where we have, we just have turn, things that tarnish our reputations, such as adult bookstores or entertainment areas. I surely don't want to have us have neighbors against neighbors. Anything else we need to do to fix our resolutions? On the extension wheel tax legislation, if we fixed our zoning resolutions, if we did a better job of using our industrial parks, both future and current, maybe we could attract companies that would bring in more tax. Maybe we could, they would give educational breaks to the community. Maybe they would take our young people and make them want to stay here, like we all do. I haven't been here long, and I've listened to a lot of people that have been here long. And I think we have a great opportunity to make our area a great place in the future. But we do need to look at our zoning areas. Every one of our issues has become part and parcel of all those zoning issues. We need to look at them. We need to upgrade our schools. We need to upgrade all our schools. We can't just look and make a budget without ever getting a estimate of things and then cut out certain schools, such as Rush Strong, because it's little and no one cares. Please, 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 look at our zoning laws, look at our zoning resolutions, make this the best community that we can be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Scott Hurley.
Chairman, I may, my topics may be covered by some of these folks. If you would move me to the last, I may...
I can get you almost to last. How about next to it?
That's fine. That's fine. Thank you.
Next, we have Mark Lickte.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mark Lickte. I live at 310 Leeper Overlook in Dandridge, Tennessee. The county commission should not approve the resolutions for special use permits as modified by the RPC. The intent of the resolution as originally written was the campgrounds were to be removed from the A1 as a permitted land use and instead be treated as a special use. The modification made to the resolution changes is to be treated more like a special exception within A1. Second, the RPC has added land uses that are in conflict and are not defined. Rock crushing. Rock crushing is associated with mining operations. Mining operations are already a permitted land use in I-1. What is the true intention of this for A1? Value-added agriculture processing activities. What exactly is this? It's not defined. The changes made will not improve the situation with A1. It actually makes it worse. Witnessing how this resolution was totally transformed, along with the fiasco that ensued this past year with Carms and Best, and now the Piedmont situation, the only conclusion I have come to realize is that the county has a people and accountability issue. It doesn't matter how well the zoning districts are written and defined. If the current motivations by the people involved, the process, are not to fulfill their obligations to enforce compliance, but rather to twist and manipulate things in order to allow land uses they decide meets their own agenda, there is no opportunity for improvement. The county commission has within its authority to correct this, but you need to need, but you too need to have the motivation to resolve it and work on behalf of the citizens of Jefferson County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Marion Knight.
Marion Knight, 440 West Main Street in Dandridge. A year ago, you passed the following motion by a vote of 15 to 3. Regional Planning Commission is to proceed with starting to review all the zoning and regulations and what is involved in them and bring recommended updates to County Commission. Since then, the planners have been focused on blanket rezoning in spite of pleas that they focus first on the contents of the zones, even ignoring the warning of their advisor who said, "Be careful what you wish for." If you rezone large swaths of land without ever establishing what is allowed in those zones, your increased tax benefits will be costly. This happened in the area that I came from. Big developers and big corporations were invited in. They took control of local boards to establish rules that fit them. Did we end up with more tax receipts? Yes. But we also ended up with traffic jams, contaminated water, contaminated soil, and cancer clusters. We became a generic area of malls, office parks, hotels, and chain stores that pushed out local businesses. We lost our identity and our soul. Even God was evicted. If you don't deal with the contents and standards for the zones, good people like Mr. Brunner will continue to be victimized. His small machine shop doesn't actually fit into any zone. It might even fit better in A1, where small businesses are allowed. But a year has passed, and zones have not been addressed. I came here because this area is not yet spoiled. It's still filled with good, generous, hardworking, God-fearing people. It's just like the place of my childhood, where my family has lived for more than 400 years. I made a vow that if I saw the same thing happening here, I would speak out. I would warn you about what will come if you let it in. A door is opening here to big developers and big corporations. Local officials are focused on increasing tax base, but they have forgotten to look at what has happened in other areas that have traded their beautiful land for tax dollars. So I am here to say, please tell the planners they must decide what's appropriate for each zone and then set standards. Do this before even thinking about blanket rezoning. If you rezone first, local control will be gone. Big developers and big corporations will set the rules, and over time, this county too will lose its soul. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Brooks.
My name is Austin Brooks. I live at 816 Highway 113, White Pine, Tennessee. I had asked for this to be on the agenda. I suppose I was too late on that. I have a draft of a C3 zone that we could consider adding to our zoning regulations, and this would take care of people like Mr. Brunner, who don't quite fit in A1, don't quite fit in I-1. And I've got a copy that I will pass out to each of you, and I think this is something we need to consider for Mr. Brunner, as well as business owners in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next, we have Jennifer Montgomery.
I'm Jennifer Montgomery, 2255 Charlie Hodges Road, 37871. I'm here, along with my neighbors, to speak against this Brunner Road rezoning. This is not the first time that I, along with my neighbors, have appeared here in protest of a rezoning. In fact, my last appearance was about a strikingly similar rezoning request to move a property from agricultural to industrial zoning. This request makes no more sense than the previous request. This requested zoning is not only too drastic, it is being made, as was the previous request, without the benefit of adequate comprehensive planning in this county. It is the responsibility of this commission to work in the public interest. Comprehensive planning professionally made with community consensus and including zoning plans would be common sense. At least it would go a long way toward informing the public about reasonable and sensible future zoning requests. Considerable time, effort, and energy would be saved. But the most important benefit of such comprehensive planning is the opportunity for a more economically prosperous, safer, more harmonious, and more beautiful community. These goals are becoming more complicated as the community grows and the number of property owners grows as well. Between 2022 and 2023, the number of single-family properties, and this is according to East Tennessee Realtors MLS data, the number of single-family properties sold in Jefferson County grew 8.1%. For comparison, that statistic in Knox County was negative 16.6%. The need for comprehensive zoning against, again, professionally made with community consensus and including zoning plans is becoming more dire and is long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Beth Nelson.
Beth Nelson, Strawberry Plains. Again, I have followed and worked on zoning issues in this county for 15-plus years, and the reason is because I care about my community and I care about this whole county, not just Strawberry Plains. I know all of you are aware that our zoning is a mess. As far as the resolution to change the zoning from A1 to industrial, downzoning to the bottom industrial, I'm not hearing my community demanding I-1. What I'm hearing is they're asking you to fix it. I'm hearing at the work session, not one person support industrial zoning. They were supporting Mr. Brunner's character, which I also support. A denial is not the answer. We all want the same thing. We want Mr. Brunner to succeed. He's an entrepreneur. We should be working on our small businesses. I have a small business. We should be helping each other. But this is not what is happening with our zoning. So again, we need adjustments, and you have the ability to do that. You have the ability, as a county commissioner, to do that. So again, adjustments. The majority of my community is residential. From Esslinger Road, and many of y'all may not know what that means, but it is the pocket that Mr. Brunner is asking for a rezoning. From Esslinger Road to Big Ben Road, we have 1,894 acres of R1, A1, and C2. Do you know how many industrial acres we have? 150 in its sitting. The majority of the community, again, is residential. The theory of industrial and commercial corridors does not line up with anything this commission has asked for or approved. Just like Mrs. Knight spoke earlier, it was to look at all the zoning. It wasn't to start blanket-laying corridors down the main... It wasn't to start blanket-laying corridors down the main corridors, industrial and commercial. Commercial probably makes sense because that supports our communities. That's probably what makes the most sense. However, industrial and commercial are two totally different zonings and two totally different type businesses. Commercial, again, supports the community. Industrial does the opposite, is the most noxious and harmful zone. His zone, he is zoned inappropriately, and you're asking for an inappropriate zone in my neighborhood. An industrial zoning in my neighborhood is incompatible to my community. I would also add, if you rezone one property to industrial, you're changing the entire trajectory of Strawberry Plains. We have fought and fought for our community to have appropriate zoning. This area is mostly homes, small businesses, and farms. Remember that number, 1,894 acres?
Term.
Why would you consider rezoning this for my entire community to be changed? Mr., may I have two seconds more, please? Thank you.
Agreed.
I also thought it was very appropriate for Mr. Brunner to seek out guidance from the Alliance. I appreciate what the Alliance is doing, and they worked with Mr. Brunner on a plan, and it sounds like he has a good business plan set. You received a letter today from the Alliance, and I will quote the letter, and I have also talked to the Alliance. "We ask you to carefully consider Mr. Brunner's request and seek a solution, a solution to allow his business to move forward." They are not endorsing an industrial zoning. They are asking you to find a solution. County Commission is obligated to consider what's best for our community and the county as a whole. This is a big picture. It is not about one piece of property and one person. Please, I am asking you to find a solution.
Thank you. Mr. Dale Morgan.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Well, I come and support Mr. Brunner, and I hear so much about this zoning garbage, I'm gonna call it, because we're talking two acres of property. We're not talking about rezoning the whole county, so I don't see the big to-do over rezoning two acres. We have the mines, we have Walker's Trucking, we have the property there at Whittaker Road that's industrial. I'm not sure about the old Jerry Morgan shop, if that's industrial or not. So what's the difference in letting a man do what he needs to do on his own property? He needs industrial zoning. He's not making any harm for the community. To zone one piece of property is not changing the whole county or the whole community, and I don't understand why all these people's getting off on saying it's changing the whole community. I've lived there for most of my life in that community and worked there on the farm long before I moved there, which I hated to the back of it anyway. That's what we raised when I was little. That's how we paid for our Christmas. Mom and Dad paid for their house. It's not a hard work. And that's what Robert's trying to do, is grow his business, grow the community, create jobs, create tax dollars. It's not changing the whole community. I cannot get over these people saying that. And the last time these people were up here, they were calling it the Rush Drawn Community. Well, there ain't no such thing. We got Rush Drawn Elementary, we got Strawberry Plains, Tennessee, and that's what it is. And then we got New Market above that. But I just don't understand why people are so negative over one zoning of property, because it's not like he can change the whole community. He's only changing two acres so he can get his loans and build his building and grow his business. And I'd like to say, the County Commission, I'd like to thank you all for having prayer and the pledge allegiance to this flag, because we've let that go in our community. That's another thing we need to fight for. We need to get prayer back in our schools, and to get corporal punishment back in our schools, and take our country over. We've let these minority groups come in here and change everything, the atheist and all these other people, and I'm tired of it. And you guys, I don't know how much of difference you can make in that, but we all need to get together and fight and put it back like it needs to be. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have David Nelson.
David Nelson, I live at 470 Judson Road in Strawberry Plains. First tonight, I want to separate a few rumors that are surrounding dialogue and conversation about this I-1 zoning from facts. Rumor number one, Highway 11E has been designated as a commercial-industrial corridor. The fact is, there is no such designation, nor has zoning action taken place to make such a designation. On January 17, 2023, County Commission approved a motion for the Regional Planning Commission to review and update zoning regulations. There was no directive to review anything about commercial-industrial corridor. There has been discussion about this, both in the Regional Planning Commission and in this commission, about the possibility, only possibility, of either a commercial overlay or a commercial-industrial overlay, but it is discussion only. The Regional Planning Commission has made no recommendations yet to County Commission in response to reviewing and updating zoning. So, any assertions that 11E has been designated commercial-industrial simply is hearsay, and even worse, I believe it is an intentional rumor. Rumor number two, adjacent property is zoned I-1. The fact is, property zoned I-1, excuse me, property is zoned I-1, not A1, the property zoned I-1 is not adjacent. It is on the opposite side of Highway 11E. It's the second property west from Mr. Brunner's rezoning request. What you see on Highway 11E is the rear of I-1 property, which fronts on another road on Old Andrew Johnson Highway. It doesn't front on 11E. What you see on Highway 11E is all wooded. There is no visible sign of any structure or business activity at all from Highway 11E. Further, this I-1 property is mining property, which was grandfathered in as an industrial use when zoning was adopted in 1998. It was not a rezoning. Also, there is no industrial activity taking place on this I-1 property, and none has taken place for at least over 10 years. This I-1 property is used for office space. It is not an industrial use. Rumor number three, Mr. Brunner must have an I-1 zone. The fact is, in Mr. Brunner's own words at work session, the property does not have to be zoned I-1. It just needs to be properly zoned, appropriate for what he wants to do. I-1 zoning is just the answer that our Regional Planning Commission gave to Mr. Brunner. I will say this again, I am not opposed to what Mr. Brunner wants to do. I am not. He can do what he wants to on his property as long as it fits proper zoning. His planned use could just as easily be classified as commercial use. Other zoning ordinances that I have looked at classify machine shops as a commercial use, but I will continue to vehemently oppose any new industrial zoning in our community. Why? Well, while Mr. Brunner's use would not be obtrusive nor create any nuisance in and of itself, other allowed uses in I-1 certainly would and could. When Mr. Brunner sells his property or his heirs take ownership, it could then become any one of several undesirable I-1 uses in what is primarily a residential community. Also, as we all know, one I-zone begets another I-1 zone, which begets another I-1 zone. And furthermore, creating I-1 zones opens the door for I-2 zones on adjacent property.
Sir, can you close up real quick?
I don't think that the timer was started correctly when you started.
I have no idea. I just watched it run out. It was started. Let's just finish up, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any use allowed in an I-2 zone would be deplorable in a residential community. We do not want activities such as adult businesses, pain management clinics, food processing, outdoor shooting ranges, slaughterhouses, asphalt plants, chemical plants, smelting plants, or incinerators in a residential community. And there are other possible solutions for Mr. Brunner. There are, which would not interfere with the residential character of this community. It is unfortunate that our zoning administration lacked enough interest to get this right, both for Mr. Brunner and for this entire community. So here are two options that I can think of that our zoning administration could have considered, and why not? One, the Regional Planning Commission could have recommended amending either the C1 or the C2 district to allow a machine shop as a permitted use. Why not? Or two, the Regional Planning Commission could have recommended adding a new commercial zone, which would include machine shops as a permitted use. Either one of these two options still could be implemented within the timeframe Mr. Brunner needs to be properly zoned, either by Regional Planning or by this commission. Several times over the past couple of years, County Commission has needed to step in and reverse action by our zoning administration, because what they did was not in the best interest of our county. So commissioners, I ask you, will you step in to provide a win-win solution for Mr. Brunner and for this entire, for everyone's benefit? Will you please do that?
Thanks, sir. Mr. Scott Hurley.
You're next to the last, Mr. Chairman. You're next to the last.
Nope, Mr. Brunner's last.
Okay, I have one from the lady that didn't make it. I'll wait until you, before Mr. Hurley.
We'll put you right after Mr. Hurley. He's took the podium twice, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of commission. My name is Scott Hurley. I live at 5312 Rio Vista Lane in Knoxville, Tennessee. I am here tonight to speak on behalf of a number of residents in District 2 and in District 6 on this zoning issue. Let me say that I was born and raised in Hancock County, Tennessee, have lived for the last 43 years in Knoxville, Tennessee. In the last 40 years, I've practiced law out of Knoxville, Tennessee, and much of what I do involves having the opportunity to come and work with people like commissions, including this one, in counties all throughout the eastern part of this state. It's an opportunity that I treasure. It's an opportunity that I enjoy, but I can also say that the people of this community, and I have been here a number of times over the last 10 years, the people of this community are some of the finest people that I've encountered in any part of eastern Tennessee. So I come here tonight to speak on this issue because I've been asked to do so by a number of folks from these two districts, and they are residents by and large of Districts 2 and 6. They are by and large citizens of this community. They are by and large homeowners. They are, almost invariably, taxpayers. I don't need to go into the specifics of why they oppose this rezoning plan that has been put forward for these two projects, because they've addressed those adequately tonight, but I will leave you with this. As I have the honor and the pleasure of traveling the eastern third of this state on issues like this, I see no issue anywhere at any time that causes more upset, more upheaval, more dissension, more division, or more harm than to go into an existing zoning plan, especially one that involves residential homes, and especially one that involves citizens that have lived in that community for a long period of time, and to reach into that zone and to engage in what I have heard referred to time and time again as radical change. A radical change to the zoning use of one or more properties in that community, a radical change in comparison to the homes and the residences where these hard-working people live. So I would ask you, for that reason, to resist any temptation to go into a community with an established zone and to radically change it in a way that disrupts a residential community where hard-working people, taxpayers and citizens of this community have their lives invested. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Blevins, who might that be that you want to speak for?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's for Miss Annette Loy. She lives at 1258 Beaver Creek, Strawberry Plains, Tennessee. She couldn't make it out because of the icy roads out there. We've still got some bad spots in that end of the county. Probably got an email about it earlier. She says in her email, "Thank you, Editor Dale Gentry, for your, our view article that appeared in the Standard Banner on December 28. The article presented a very accurate assessment of how efforts being made to bring about order and fairness to the zoning issues have plagued Jefferson County for, in recent years. Recently, I spent three hours in a county commission work session. Multiple citizens were basically begging commissioners to provide solutions to zoning issues and conflicts. Concerns range from noise, air pollution, and disruptive problems, from inappropriately zoned and placed businesses and industries, to regulations to try and control campgrounds and RV parks. There are just no working, excuse me, things are just not working as they should, or just not working out as they should in Jefferson County. The problem seems to stem from the decisions made or not made by the Regional Planning Board and BZA. There is a solution. These boards are appointed by the county mayor and approved by the county commission. The Regional Planning Commission and BZA presently consist of two county commissioners and five citizens. The BZA consists of the other, of the five citizens. The two commissioners can't serve on that. These seven individuals hold the power to change the way our county land is used. All decisions of both bodies must be approved by the county commission. These panels are not elected bodies. Individuals serve on these panels at the pleasure of the mayor and the commission. The Jefferson County Commission and county mayor have the power to correct the deficiencies of these boards. I urge all citizens with concerns about zoning in Jefferson County to contact county mayor and county commission chairman to demand that they place qualified people in these positions. The future of our county depends upon it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Last but not least, to speak on this topic, Mr. Robert Brunner.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Robert Brunner. I live at 600 Brunner Road, Strawberry Plains, Tennessee, and seems like I'm pretty much the topic of discussion for tonight. So, all right. So I will tell you, some of this I'm gonna read for my prepared statement, and some of it will be off the cuff. My family has been on my farm for seven generations now. I am a lifelong supporter of Jefferson County. As many of you know, I've decided to expand my machine shop into a new building as we have outgrown the space that we're currently in. I have a thriving business that I look forward to growing in the Strawberry Plains community. I am proud to be a Plainsman from the Strawberry Plains community and a patriot of the Jefferson County community. I am a byproduct of this county. I have used county resources available to small business owners that are looking to start or expand their businesses in Jefferson County. I've had nothing but positive results from these resources. I am excited to have these entities available to our community to help us grow. We began our journey with the Jefferson Alliance in July of 2023. The leaders of the Alliance have been very supportive and have guided me to opportunities I would have not known about if not for their help. I have requested two acres of my land to be rezoned. According to Jefferson zoning rules and regulations that are in place today, January 22 of 2024, I must be zoned industrial 1 for manufacturing. That is what I do, is I manufacture parts for industries around east Tennessee. This is not my choice, but where I was told I must be as a manufacturing machine shop. I do understand that zoning in Jefferson County is actively working to update the zoning regulations. This may or may not affect me and my zoning designation in the future, but I am here tonight asking commissioners to approve my request at this time, tonight. I have read and met with all requirements listed in zoning regulations that the County Commission, the zoning board have put in place prior to tonight's meeting. I see- I see no reason why I should be denied opportunity to expand my business when I have met all requirements and have been approved by zoning boards six to one. Whenever we had the work session, we had households, seven out of nine households spoke in favor of me, and I would like to have extra time since I am the center of attention. All right. Jordan from the State Zoning saw no issue with my request and noted that my company would be a good fit for this location, referencing the business does not make noise pollution or produce any harmful environmental byproducts. We do not interfere with traffic flow. We have no big, no neighbors on either side of the property that will be infringed upon. I had, uh, I had Ms. Marion Knott. She came to my facility, and whenever she visited that facility, she could not believe that she couldn't hear any machine run, period, in the facility that I have at my house. So that tells me right there that I am not in any way infringing upon anybody. I requested that I have this two-acre, small portion of my family farm be taken at the intersection of Highway 11E and Brunner Road. It is a major four-lane highway, has all required utilities available. I understand the concerns of a vocal minority in this community who live in fear of what-ifs and use this fear to spread fear to others. In the last couple of weeks, I've been attacked, social media continuously, about the slaughterhouse, methadone clinics. You've run the slaughterhouse guys clean out of the county. They've invested in Green County for anybody that doesn't know that. They're not doing business in Jefferson County. So that was the community's choice, and I respect that. I am not the slaughterhouse. I'm not running a methadone clinic. I'm not any part of that. So as I'm saying here, the what-ifs, and even on social media, I've been attacked, and I sat there and let it go, and I let it go. And then I began to hear that I was being run down to County Commissioners, so I posted on social media what my plans were, and out of that post, I put my phone number and asked people to contact me. Not one person contacted me opposing what I was doing, and I only had two people contact me that were wishing me well. So this vote is about my machine shop, my need for a bigger building. I'm a lifetime resident of this community. I have a small business and need to expand. I want to be able to be a hometown business in Strawberry Plains. I have a meeting tomorrow morning with one of my largest customers. I had to turn down work Friday because I don't have machinery that suits their needs, and I'm looking to grow. As of right now, I'm probably somewheres in between $750,000 and $1 million worth of equipment in a 1,500-square-foot building. And Ms. Huffaker, she had, she came and visited my shop yesterday. So she sees and knows what I'm doing there. So does Ms. Knott. So what we're doing there is we're creating jobs, and we're trying to do better for my community as Strawberry Plains and Jefferson County as a whole. I have one question. I have one question. We're talking about all these residents in Strawberry Plains. This gentleman, Piedmont, he talks about how it was whenever it was a one-room school, house, three-room, whatever. I too remember whenever Strawberry Plains was a very small community, and I also know that you can't turn without seeing a house somewheres anymore. Those farms are gone, and if anybody that says that it's not, they're lying to their self. They're gone. They're gone. So I'm telling you, it's changing here, and you either say, okay, it's changing, or you move on. So I have one question. At Whittaker Road, everybody's talking about industrial zoning. In the last year, there's a gentleman's built a new building right there. He's from Sevier County, and it was passed that he'd be passed with industrial zoning. That's within one and a half miles from my house. Also, in that same area that's within one and a half miles, there's 270 acres that is owned by Norfolk Southern that is zoned I-one industrial. So what is the deal about this whole, I mean, I don't get it. I don't get it. I'm trying to do better for myself, and they're saying, wait, we're going to rezone. I was here for the meeting for the slaughterhouse, and they voted it down, and they said, we're going to rezone, we're going to rezone. That was two and a half years ago. I'm 58 years old, soon to be 59. I don't have two and a half years to do a plan. I've got 10 years to do this expansion and pay it off. I don't get free money from outside revenue. I produce it by my company. I appreciate the good things that the people are saying about me, and even the opposition, but I'm talking tonight, January the 22nd, 2024, we need to make a decision so I can move forward. What you do next week and next month is up to you guys. That's up to you. I don't care, but I need to move forward with what I'm needing to do, and I've met every obligation that the county has set before me, and I've used county resources, as I've said, to get to this point. Everybody says it's good. Are you having a problem there, sir?
I'll talk to him.
All right, that's good, because we'll talk, because Mr. Blevins-
All right now, now we're done.
Mr. Blevins, being one of my representatives-
Robert, you have the floor. He will remain quiet till you're done.
Mr. Blevins, as one of my representatives, I spoke with him the day that I come to the zoning board, or not to the zoning board, to the zoning office to get this approved or to get to sign up for it. I approached him and told him what I was up, what I was planning to do with my property, and he said to me that it's your property, you should be able to do what you want with it. That was his words. So with that being said, I've yet to hear anything past that discussion that day from him. He's not approached me. My other representative, Ransom Douglas, he has approached me more than once, trying to resolve the issue. So that told me he was looking for a solution for everybody, but I had one that did not reach out to me. So that tells me that there's no interest to resolve the issue there. So what I'm telling you is, this I-one zoning that we've got going here, that everybody's opposing, it's already in that area. It's already there, and I don't see the issue of having my property, who's everybody saying I'm not going to be an issue, let's get it done. I don't have time to wait for politics to go through for two and a half to three more years till I can move on with my life and my business. That's what I've got to say. I appreciate your time, everybody here, and I appreciate your concern. I really do. I appreciate the concern of the community, but also I have vested interests that I need to move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We'll move right along to Proclamations and Courtesy Resolutions. We have the Grateful Nation Project. Mr. John Watkins.
Mr. Chairman, General Purser is here, and she, Doug Ibbotson, Marcus Ray, started this hero card project, been highly involved in it, and this is the kickoff for it, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm Major General Leslie Purser, U.S. Army, retired and living here in Dandridge. The Grateful Nation Project slash Hero Cards is something that I picked up in Knoxville and decided to bring here to Jefferson County. Had a meeting with Mayor Potts and the Director of the School Board, Mr. Arnold, who 100% agreed that this is something we need to do for our service member who were killed in action. If you look out on the wall outside here, you'll see about 100 names of service members who were killed in action. The Hero Cards is a project, if you think about a baseball card, it's that size, and it recognizes a service member who paid the ultimate sacrifice while they were in uniform. Does not have to mean killed in action, could also be in a training accident or suicide. There were no heroes in Jefferson County recognized until we started this program. We now have three, and the high school and Carson Newman cadets are helping us with this project so we can get every one of those names on the wall out there recognized as a hero in Jefferson County. It's my honor to work with Doug Ibbotson on this project. We have established a bank account and are hoping to, um, um, collect donations at a future time so that we can distribute these cards, not just to the schools, which the schools already have. So we talk about our national anthem, say in the, say in the Pledge of Allegiance here. We also want to make sure that our students don't forget why they are free, why they live in a place where they don't have to worry about what religion they practice or what language they speak. So these cards are available to civics teachers in the high school and in all of the middle schools, thanks to Mayor Potts and Mr. Arnold. Our goal is to get more cards and present them to other places and other people so that we can recognize the true heroes of Jefferson County. Not an athlete, not a singer, not an entertainer, but our service members who gave us everything that we have. I want to say thanks to Jefferson County, to the Commissioners for allowing us to do this at your quarterly meetings. I think it's very important for our citizens to realize these people are gone, they've been buried, but we're not going to forget them. They're, they're in our hearts. Our first, our first hero tonight is Private First Class John W. Watkins. John was one of six children born to Hugh and Julia Watkins. He worked on the family farm and attended Jefferson County High School. He was drafted into United States Army as the nation was involved in the Vietnam War. Six months after joining the Army, PFC Watkins was sent to Vietnam with Company C, 2nd Battalion, 16th Infantry Regiment, 1st Infantry Division, the big red one. One month later, after getting into Vietnam, his company was part of a 16-day search-and-destroy operation in South Vietnam's Phuket Province, some 40 miles east of Saigon. In the jungles of South Vietnam in April of 1966, Charlie Company was surrounded and outnumbered outside of a Vietcong base, and in the 14-hour Battle of Ja Khang Mi, they held off 300 human wave assaults, killing 31 enemy and wounding an estimated 100. The cost to Charlie Company was also high, an 80% casualty rate, and one of those killed was PFC John Watkins. He was 21 years old. So he was in Vietnam less than a month when he died, and he earned a Bronze Star Medal, and the citation reads, "PFC Watkins was manning his position on the perimeter during the first Vietcong assault. Although his company was outnumbered by insurgent forces, PFC Watkins held his position throughout the fierce assault, continually placing effective fire in the Vietcong position. When the enemy withdrew to regroup, PFC Watkins was able to evaluate the situation and resupply himself with ammunition. Although his platoon had suffered heavy casualties during the first assault, and only a handful of service members remained, PFC Watkins, disregarding the odds, took up his position on the perimeter during the second assault and inflicted many casualties on the Vietcong. Displaying great personal courage and unwavering dedication, PFC Watkins gave his life in the defense of his platoon sector during the second assault. He made the highest sacrifice so that others could live. PFC Watkins' outstanding display of aggressiveness, devotion to duty, and personal bravery is in keeping with the finest tradition of the military service and reflects great credit upon himself, the 1st Infantry Division, and the United States Army." With us today is PFC Watkins' sister Glenda and his brother JB. If you would come up here, please. So we are presenting Glenda and JB with a plaque, with the card for Private First Class John W. Watkins, and if you want to see the size of the card, this is what the Hero Cards look like. Again, baseball cards, but for our real heroes.
We want to thank you for coming out tonight, and we appreciate the service of your brother. So in honor of that, we, I have an honorary proclamation for a hometown hero, a true hero. Whereas U.S. Army Private First Class John W. Watkins, a young man who lived in Jefferson County, Tennessee, answered the call to serve his country. He was drafted into the United States Army as the nation was involved in the Vietnam War, 1959 to 1975. And whereas U.S. Army Private First Class John W. Watkins, an Army sharpshooter from a farm of Tennessee, sacrificed his life less than a month after being sent to Vietnam on April 11th, 1966. He was awarded posthumously the Bronze Star and Purple Heart. Whereas U.S. Army Private First Class John W. Watkins made the highest sacrifice so that others could live, his outstanding display of aggressiveness, devotion to duty, and personal bravery is in keeping with the finest tradition of the military service and reflects major credit upon himself, the 1st Infantry Division, and the United States Army. Whereas U.S. Army Private First Class John W. Watkins, this young Jefferson County, Tennessee soldier exemplifies the Scripture verse, John 15:13, "Greater love hath no man than this, than a man lay down his life for his friends." And whereas family and friends loved U.S. Army Private First Class John W. Watkins, he lived a life in service to others and is worthy of special recognition and appreciation for dedicated service. Now therefore, I, Mark Potts, by virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of Jefferson County, express our sincere thanks, deepest sympathy, and condolences to the family of the late U.S. Private First Class John W. Watkins. He will always be remembered for the sacrifice he made to Jefferson County, Tennessee, and the United States of America. In witness hereof, I hereby to set my hand and cause the seal of Jefferson County to be affixed this 16th day of January in the year of our Lord, 2024. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody. Oh. Do you want some photos?
Yeah. Just got a picture. Hold on. I'm not getting the mail. So we should, yeah.
and it's going to be there for three months until the next County Commissioners' meeting, and we will recognize another hero from Jefferson County, and then we'll rotate the photos as, as we recognize these heroes. So thank you all. Thank you again, Commissioners. I appreciate it very much that you let us do this. Thank you.
We are going to take a short rest and break, 10 minutes. We'll be back. Question or comment? Let's proceed to vote. Has anybody seen Mr. Marcus Reed? Mr. Bailiff, can you reel him in? Thank you, sir. Sir, we appreciate a vote. We have 16 yeses, passes. We don't have anything on nominate and committee and elected committees, so we'll move on to reports from elected officials. Mr. Mark Potts, Mr. Mayor, you have the floor, sir.
Have a couple items for you. One's a mayoral appointment of Dean Ballinger back to the E-911 board. He filled an unexpired term, and we're requesting that he be reappointed to that board.
Thanks, sir. Question or comment? Proceed.
Second item is Resolution 2023-64 for fiscal year 2024. That's our CDBG grant application, and it takes county commission to action when we do the application for the grant. Good chance we'll get it, we usually get it.
Question or comment for the mayor?
It's an 84-16 match.
84-16. Hey, that's good.
Second item, or third item, Resolution 2023-65 for the fiscal year 2024. It's a home application grant. I've been assured that we will get it to the tune of $700,000. There's no match involved. Administrative fee comes out of the grant. This will be the third type grant we've gotten since 2018 for a total of $2.7 million coming into the county to rehab houses, in some cases, build new houses.
Question or comment for the mayor? Proceed.
Item four is Resolution 2023-71. That is a race planning grant through the Federal Highway Commission. It's highly competitive, it's hard to get this grant, but once you get it, it's recurring and helps. And what we're asking for is to do a countywide plan for travel. The first component we're asking for is GIS, uh, traffic flow on county roads and other things. We want to get the data in order to do the plan rather than drive down roads and say we need a new road here.
Question or comment? Proceed. Is that all, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I have no comments for this evening. We have other elected officials. I do believe Mr. Charles Tipton has an accept of new roads. Charles, could you take the podium, please?
Don't have anything, unless anybody's got any questions about roads.
Is there a question or comment for Mr. Tipton? Mr. Blevins?
Thank you, to you and your troops. It was bad down there, it still is tonight. Thank you so much for everything you've done for our district and all the county. We know you guys work very hard for little money. I appreciate it. We appreciate it. It ain't the first time, but thank you very, very much. You see how important they are now. Thank you.
It's hard sometimes, I'll tell you. Anyone else? Is that all you've got?
Any questions about roads, anything, new ones?
You need anything?
Yeah.
Mr. Brooks? Vote, please. Resolution passes. And we have county attorney of the department reports. County attorney, you have anything? Thank you, sir. Is Susan Gass here? No. The question arose about the assessor, did she need approval for what she was talking about? I don't... She does? You think so? That's the five-year reappraisal? All right. It does need to be approved. That is in your packet? Is there a question or comment? Not hearing any, proceed to vote. Okay, anybody else? We got reports of committees, boards, and commissions, budget committee, Mr. John Neil Scarlett. Yeah, Jesse. Sorry about that, we got to put Jesse in front of you, Mr. John Neil.
Okay, under the November 2023 financials, I just wanted to give you all an opportunity if you have any questions on those financials. Okay, the next item is the grant policy and procedures. That would need to be voted on as well. If you all have any questions from that, that is recommended from the finance committee.
Question or comment? Not hearing any, proceed to vote.
Thank you. I do have one other thing that I would like to mention. This just recently came up. Since our budgeting cycle has began, EMS, we provide a fleet schedule, and each year we put in the budget to purchase new ambulances to rotate out their fleet schedule. Well, they're currently almost two years behind on producing these ambulances. Therefore, we are putting the director behind on rotating these ambulances out by him having to wait until July 1st for those funds to be available, that we would put in the budget for fiscal year '24 and '25. He is up for two ambulances in '24, '25. We called to see if they would honor the bid that we just recently did on his ambulances for this fiscal year, and they would honor those. So I know this is not on the agenda, but I just wanted to mention this. The quicker we could get those funds available for him, then we could go ahead and put in the order for those ambulances, so he's not as far behind.
Is there a question or comment? Is there a motion to suspend the rule?
Let me ask Mr. Jesse here something. So you're saying that we could speed it up before him cut off before the thing, but it would still be paid out in next year's budget, or walk us through what you're talking about?
Okay, so my idea was, and if you all have any questions on this, or if you have another idea, I'm definitely open to it. The idea, the thought process was, if we could suspend rules this evening, to use fund balance to go ahead and put the two ambulances in his budget this fiscal year, right now, he could go ahead and do a purchase order to at least get the order in the books for him. That purchase order would remain open until he got those ambulances delivered. He currently has a purchase order for the three ambulances that he got the funds for July 1st. And then next year's budget, it would zero out what we would have budgeted for next year because we could budget it in there, but we wouldn't be using it. So each ambulance is 200, it's little shy of $250,000. So, and that's with the stretchers and cots and all the supplies, I did verify that. So for two ambulances, it would be $500,000, and the current unassigned general fund balance is currently little over $4.1 million right now.
Question or comment? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to suspend the rule. Got a second everywhere, John.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
We have a motion on the floor to suspend the rule, it's been properly seconded. Question or comment before we vote? You're voting to suspend the rule?
To suspend the rule for that right there.
For, damn it, sir.
And add it to the agenda.
And add it to the agenda. Not hearing a question or comment? Give us a second, and we'll get it up before we can vote. Proceed to vote. Sixteen zero, it passes. Jesse, does that conclude you? We've suspended the rule, but we got to vote on that. What I'm asking is, are you completed in everything that you're doing?
I'm completed.
You're completed, okay. That's where I wanted to be. I wanted to hear that. Okay, now we are voting on funding. Five hundred thousand dollars to the ambulance service.
From general fund.
From general fund. Question or comment? We have a motion on the floor to second it. Mr. Scarlett seconded it. We will proceed to vote. Passes sixteen to zero. Mr. Scarlett.
Yes, sir. We have several. First one is General Fund one oh one, amendment fifteen. Insert a stack development on day, human epidemiology, and laboratory training. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Does this have to be took by itself, or can we take multiple?
We can take multiples if you all wish that.
Is that the pleasure of the commission?
Yeah. General Fund one oh one, amendment sixteen, insurance recovery at courthouse. This is budgeting. We were brought a seventy-three thousand, five hundred dollar estimate for furniture. We sent that back as not doable. This is the insurance settlement. They adjusted it and have found furniture to do that for twenty-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-nine and ten. General Fund one oh one, amendment seventeen. This is sanitation funds for associated, and you will see it shortly, associated adjustment for salary costs. Mr. Gall had some issues on credit cards and most of, adjustments to part full-time employees starting in January. Sanitation Fund one sixteen, amendment three. This is the supplementary funds for the sixteen thousand is going. With transfers in, will be taken two hundred and seventy-eight dollars from him. Landfield two oh seven, they're using part of their fund balance to help offset the cost of this, seventeen thousand, eighty-four dollars. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment?
And I think Mr. Gall is here, and I'd like to address or have questions for him on those adjustments.
Not hearing any. We'll proceed to vote. Sixteen zero, passes. Mr. Scarlett.
General Purpose one forty-one, item eleven, one item, preschool grant, General Purpose one forty-one. Item two, one million, fifteen thousand for improvement for toddler set aside from fund balance, fifteen thousand for architecture. A million dollars, this comes from the schools, unassigned fund balance. And one forty-two, federal funds, increase training to meet progress. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a question or comment for that group? Not hearing any. We'll proceed to vote. We have fifteen yes and one no. Mr. Scarlett.
Resolution twenty-three sixty-eight, wheel tax resolution. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment?
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I'd like to move, there was some questions.
John Neil, use the microphone, please.
There's some question on this tonight. Several people have expressed different opinions. Like to move to postpone to our next regular meeting. Ms. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion to postpone. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second to postpone. Is there any opposition to postpone?
April May, there was some discussion, different people had on this thing. I'd just like to move postpone.
Hold on. One person speaks at a time, Mr. Coleman or Ms. Jenny.
I just think we'd be better off to move it to our next regular meeting.
Is there any time to take to price and, to keep the time by changing it?
Yes.
I mean, we're still able to do that, right?
Okay, if it don't go up for a vote, it has to pass by fourteen votes at two consecutive meetings. That would push it to the April meeting, and that would push it to the, be the June for the budget. No, it's not a regular schedule. See, it'd actually be the July meeting. It'd be the April to July meeting. It would be, if that is correct.
So the sunset would already be in effect.
It'll be in effect anyway. It doesn't miss it.
I, again, would ask why we have to do that. We got a warm, we got enough, uh, commissioners here to vote on this, and I think we ought to the citizens to go ahead and vote them the way that the commission is working it to us, and I'll be one of those.
Sure. Okay, well, we'll vote on the postponement. You vote yes, you're voting to postpone. You vote no, you're voting deny.
We didn't vote.
I didn't vote.
I didn't either.
You're voting on the postpone first.
But it popped up that it's done, and it's not letting us vote.
That's the previous vote, I believe. Yeah, we got, we got a backup just saying. You will be voting on as a postpone, not on the wheel tax. Eight guesses, eight nos. You have Resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty-eight, the new wheel tax resolution. Is there a question or comment?
Ms. Chairman, vote, please.
Go ahead. We have ten yes and six nos, fails. Mr. Scarlett.
Fixed asset policy update, Ms. Chairman, so move it.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. Sixteen yes, zero nos, pass.
Inter-local cooperative purchase agreements required. There is two different parts to this thing. One, we have a set of contracts, and you can see them. There's two, two things, and Ms. Jesse can answer questions on these. There are two entities and two things that have to be approved and have contracts signed. Is that correct, Ms. Jesse?
That's correct. And this, we've done this before, it's just been several years, so we're just upset.
And the approv, and you've got approval of other groups. This follows along with our purchasing agent, and you might want to address this a little bit on that, Ms. Jesse, about the purchasing agent, what they're doing, what they've saved, and an update on that.
Okay, so currently, our purchasing agent, who started July first, I've asked her to keep a spreadsheet of her savings, mainly just so I can present it to you all, but after her six months of working in our office, she has saved almost four hundred thousand dollars to the county. Those are funds that we've been able to spend on other items. The agreements that you'll be voting on this evening, we do participate in different types of co-op agreements, but this is things that she's gone to class and she's learned about, other opportunities to purchase and save even more money. Our auditors have said that we do need signed agreements for those two, and then the other three or four, we just need it stated in the minutes if you all approve us to participate. We will, we will still follow the purchasing policy, so don't worry about that, but these co-ops open up opportunities for us to save even more money if we're able to purchase them. I do know she's highly spoken of at the Sheriff's Department. If anyone is with the Sheriff's Department here, I don't see anybody, but they told me that she, they would give some compliments to her if, just ask them. She's saving lots of money right now, so I certainly do appreciate you all approving her position.
Question or comment?
Sure.
I would like to say that I attended training with you and her, and I watched you both during the day because I was learning a lot, and she seemed very eager, very impressive. And I'm not surprised that she's done that for the county. And I, the commissioner, I sincerely appreciate anyone stating the coming.
Thank you. I will pass that on to her.
Mr. Scarlett, that concludes your business.
That's all I've been passed for, Ms. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You have your nonprofits, you have all your fire departments, your libraries, we're moving down to old business. And old business, A, we have Resolution twenty twenty-three dash four nine, special uses and special use permits. Ms. Huffaker, would you want to move this to a committee?
No, that's at the end.
That's at the end, okay.
That's short-term rentals.
Okay.
Different.
Is there a question or comment to this resolution?
Uh, Ms. Chairman.
Sure.
Since there seems to be a lot of issue about what's in different ones, I would like to amend this by putting in it, since we're putting special permissions, to take out, out of I one, to place in special permission, add to the adult, the methadone clinic, and if anybody's got any others, I'd gladly accept that if, if that would solve some of the problems with Mr. Brunner's thing. Everybody seems to support him. So I think we've got a vehicle here to be able to do that. If, if we get rid of those, if you want to pull those out, so I move it, and I'm willing to accept other things to list in that.
Okay.
If I get a second.
There's a second, Mr. A.J. Walker, second. How you doing there?
Okay, I want to speak to this beast that I guess I created, and I want to apologize for creating it. So the intent of this special use resolution was for campgrounds, RV parks, and travel trailer parks, and it was to allow nearby property owners and citizens to be able to express concern and bring forth pertinent issues to prevent incompatible entities from locating beside one another and to help maintain the integrity of a zoning district. The resolution was amended and modified by Planning Commission, and they added verbiage to include value-added agricultural processing activities to A one and crushing of rock in A one. And I do think methadone clinics need placed in a different location, but I don't think it needs to be in the special use permit. So commissioners and citizens have expressed the following concerns about the special use permit, and there's concerns associated with additions in the amendment, concerns that the intent was modified, concerns for the lack of standards in the resolution for the Board of Zoning Appeals to quantitatively determine whether or not a property should be or should not be issued a permit, and concern with the process of the Board of Zoning Appeals having complete final authority with the permitting issuance. And because I agree that with the aforementioned concerns, I contacted our legal counsel to see if I could pull the resolution as primary sponsor. You can't hear? Oh. However, since County Commission and Planning Commission took action, that was not an option, so I can't stop this resolution. And tonight, I'm asking for your help in killing and voting down the original resolution and its amendments. So please vote no on both, as well as this added additional amendment. If they're voted down, then no further actions will be required, and the resolution will cease. I appreciate the support you, the commission, and citizens have given me during this resolution process, and I apologize for any inconveniences it may have caused you, the Planning Commission, and/or the citizens. And I'm committed to, to keep researching on the campground zoning, but again, I'm asking for your help to vote down the original resolution and all the amendments. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Scarlett, your motion to amend is on the floor. Who was your second? Is it Mr. Walter? I believe Mr. Brooks had the next right to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Mr. Scarlett, would you please say exactly what your motion is?
Well, my motion is to add verbiage that would take out the, well, would require special use.
Use your microphone, please.
Special use permit or special permission, however that resolution is termed, for the things that... may find a solution to Mr. Brunner's problem to pass on this because he has to deal with what's here right now, not what's here five days from now. He has to go with what's here. So my, my motion is to take those things, if the adult businesses, the pain clinics, the methadone clinic, all of that, take that out of I one and make it special permission, and I'm open to add, if there's other things in that that's offensive, that won't allow us to rezone Mr. Brunner's, I'm open to add that to by permission.
So you're suggesting in special use, we have campgrounds, RV parks, travel trailers in A one and RR zones, value-added agriculture processing activities in A one, crushing of rock in A one, and then the additions, where are you suggesting we put them?
They're I one.
They remain in I one.
They remain in I one. I'm not changing them out, but they would require that those, whatever those issues are, the adult businesses, the methadone, pain clinics, whatever that is that people are finding, they say they support Mr. Brunner, they say they support everything else, I'm trying to offer an opportunity that we can find a solution so he can proceed, and we put those in a permission, by permission only.
Okay.
So I'm open to add others if, if you would, if somebody's wanting to do that.
But the motion on the floor as is, you're wanting to add adult businesses. But the motion on the floor as is, you're wanting to add adult businesses.
Take those out.
No, we just want to put them in, as for special use.
Now, my understanding of this motion right now, let me interject right here, is you're wanting to take out, and using the special use clause, you're wanting to take out all this other stuff.
I'm not taking, I'm not taking them out. They're in it already. What I'm saying that they, they would require special permission even to get them into the I-1.
Even to get to I-1.
Even to get them, even if the property's zoned I-1.
So you're saying special permission all the way around?
So like Mr. Brunner's thing down there, if it's zoned I-1, he builds his machine shop, it can cut away the worry that he would sell it for some other thing. Even if it's zoned I-1, this would require
Special permission.
Permission, special permission in those objectionable uses that everybody say that they're against. And they can be, I'm just giving two examples, there can be more if somebody else wants to add more.
But there's a motion on the floor, so I just want to make sure I've got the motion straight.
That's a motion to amend, what you're saying.
A motion to amend?
You're not changing the original motion, you're just amending it.
I'm just wanting to add that in, since we're doing these special permission things.
Who made the original motion?
I don't have a copy of the original.
I didn't hear Katie make a motion.
Well, you can move to take that out? You can amend it, take it out?
Okay, the original motion reads, campgrounds, RV parks, and travel trailer parks, A-1 and RR zones, value-added agriculture processing activities, and crushing of rock, A-1, under special use. Marcus Reed, say it, hang on a second.
Mr. Chairman, do I still have a little time?
Sure.
I'll be brief. In doing any of this with the special use, you are putting the decision-making in the hands of the BZA. The BZA is made up of five citizens appointed by the mayor. You would have no elected official making these decisions. I believe Ms. Huffaker has the right idea to vote all of this down. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Marcus Reed.
I'd just like to add to that, we, we have heard a lot about zoning tonight, and we're in a, whatever you want to call it, a nation's in chaos, so I guess we should follow along and be ca- in chaos over zoning. I go back to what I heard two people say tonight. I don't know if Marion Knight is still here, but she talked about where she came from, and I can talk about where I came from. I'm a transplant to Jefferson County through 27 years in the Marine Corps, and I'm at home in Jefferson County due to the amount of people that I've added, and in my district, I added enough for me to get voted in. But I would like to make a point that we are doing exactly what happened in her hometown. You're doing exactly what happened in my hometown. You go to my hometown, and you can hardly get through it. It's three square miles larger than Jefferson County, it's got over 100,000 people in it. They have to use roundabouts to keep the traffic flowing, because it's bumper-to-bumper. There's houses everywhere, apartments, excuse me, apartments, and townhomes. There's really no room left for anything, because it's all major corporations, major, large businesses, and yes, we need some of those. But we need to just say no to this resolution, and we need to listen to the citizens about our long-range planning committee, and we need to slow down with the zoning, but we need to find a way that we can change the zoning so Mr. Brunner can get his business up and running that will help the county in a right way. And we said no to putting a commercial idea on the agenda tonight. That part I don't understand. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Patterson.
I'm just going to state, I'd like to remove the rock crushing unit in that Piedmont area.
All right. Have you moved, you moved to any special?
Yes.
Take it out.
Take it out.
Mr. Patterson, would you say that in your microphone right there? So everybody can hear you.
Just made a motion to remove from resolution, the rock crusher that they're wanting to put in in the Piedmont community.
Thank you, sir. Now, Mr. Scarlett, do you take that back and say it? In your amendment?
Yes, sir, I'll take it back and say it.
Katie Huffaker?
Okay. This special use permit has evolved into something that it, in my opinion, never should have been. So, in my opinion, we just need to kill this whole thing, take a step back. We can fix the methadone clinics easily, they can go somewhere else. And the rock crusher should not be in here, it's an industrial business. But if we pass this special use permit, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to be physically sick because I started the beast. And I apologize to the citizens and the people who have helped me, because this was not the intent of this thing, and it's spiraling out of control. And
Order that we
And please, I'm begging you, please vote no on all of it, so we can put it behind us and work on different solutions to resolve these issues.
Okay, we'll vote on the amendment. If you are for the amendment, vote yes.
Mr. Chairman, could you just repeat, so, could you just clear everything up for all of us? I think everybody in the room would appreciate it.
Okay. What we got on the agenda right now is the resolution for special uses and special use permits. Okay, what we have is, we have a motion on the floor to amend this resolution that has been seconded and been added to since then. Okay, we have to vote on the amendment first, because it was brought up first. Then we will vote on the resolution itself. If you're for the amendments that's added to it, vote yes. If not, vote no. Then we will vote on the whole resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Katie Huffaker. I agree, vote no.
We will proceed to vote. If you're voting for the amendment, vote yes. If you're voting against it being amended, vote no. We have five guesses, ten noes. Noes. Didn't do anything, no amendment, nobody made it to 11. So we are going back to the resolution, the resolution 2023-49, special uses and special use permits. If you are for this resolution, vote yes. If you're against it, vote no. We'll have to have a motion on the floor.
You have a motion on the floor, because they tried to amend it.
It was never moved. It was never moved. In the microphone, sir, in the microphone.
I'm not sure that we need to vote on this, period, because here's the reason. And Mr. Drennan can address this, I had a conversation as a planning commissioner with Mr. Drennan, but we were advised by the state planner that this should come back because it was amended. And I think Mr. Drennan has a, an opposite opinion about how it's supposed to go, and what the process is, and I'd like for him to address that.
Just real quick, I'll, I'll try to give you the abbreviated version of typically how zoning amendments go. Just so you know the role of a planning commission. The planning commission is a recommend, it only recommends, it's a recommending body, period. It recommends approval or denial of proposed zoning amendments, or it provides suggestions. That's it. I, I'm not saying that's not an important function, but that's their role. This body controls when and how the zoning resolution is ever amended. That process usually starts here. That a proposed amendment to the zoning resolution goes to the planning commission, and the planning commission does one of those three things. They recommend approval, denial, or they make suggestions for some change to whatever was brought to them. The next step is it goes to the regional planning commissions of the cities that have regional planning commissions. Is it four?
Three.
There, okay, there's three, three cities in Jefferson County that have regional planning commissions. Again, they don't have any control over you amending the zoning resolution, but it is a necessary step in the process for that to ultimately come back to you to vote. So typically, or I, based on what I know about at least the special use permit, once the planning commission decided that they were going to make suggestions regarding this resolution, the next step would have been to transmit it to the regional planning commissions of the cities as is Ms. Commissioner Huffaker's original resolution with the proposed changes. And then those three bodies make a recommendation, and it ultimately comes back to you guys, and you guys vote on the original, her original motion, or the suggestions of the planning commission, or any combination of those. As I understand, as I understand what occurred, is the, based on what Commissioner Scarlett indicated, was that it came back here first, as opposed to going to the regional planning commissions of the cities. So, in truth, it, it should have been, it should have been transmitted, well, actually, it should be transmitted to those regional planning commissions of those cities in the original form that it was sent, with the suggestions of the planning commission, and then after they vote, it would come back to you, for you guys to vote ultimately on it one way or the other. I say all of that to say that that step, as far as I know, I don't, I don't know if it was ever submitted to the cities, has not been fulfilled. Did I, did I answer your question?
Yes, so if we're voting on this, should the motion be for or against the thing, or to either send it or not send it?
I, I, I think that you're, you're a step ahead of the, of the process, that the city should have considered what Commissioner Huffaker's original motion was with those suggestions, and then those come back. So I think you're a step ahead. My, my, my suggestion would be, just from a purely legal procedural standpoint, is it needs, needs to be considered by the cities, the cities' regional, those three regional planning commissions before this body ultimately makes a decision on whether or not they're going to amend his own. I'm sorry, his own resolution.
Is there a question or a comment for the turn? Mr. Brooks?
Mr. Drennan, we just voted to amend it, and you're saying that it should not have even been before this body yet?
The, the amendment, if, the, the body could have, I, I, they could have, I guess, considered an amendment, but if they made any operation, it would have to go back to the regional planning commission again, the county regional planning commission, and then go to the cities. So as far as the ultimate decision on whether the zoning resolution was amended, you're 100% correct. You were a step ahead of those cities. They should have considered that first, if you were going to actually change it. If you were going to recommend another change to that zoning ordinance, it would have to go back through that whole step process again, back to the regional. If you, in other words, had the amendment passed, my thought would have been procedurally, it would have had to go back to the regional planning commission, because you subsequently amended that. You with me?
But the amendments failed?
That's correct.
Okay, so
It should go to the cities.
Mr. Seals, who also serves as our zoning officer, just said this has not been through the cities, is that correct? Okay, so I have, I'm, I'm unclear as to why it's in front of us, why it was in our packet.
I don't know.
Okay. And why we're taking action on it.
Other than to amend.
The only reason that this thing's back here is because the state planner told the regional planning commission that it had to come back here before it could be proceeded to the cities. And so the regional planning commission referred it back to the commission on the advice of the state planner. So from, and Mr. Drennan has said that was a bad call. And so from that standpoint, that's where we stand. So how do we solve this?
It's got to go to the cities, I don't think you can ultimately take, I, I would not, I would not advise you to take ultimate, I'm sorry, vote on actually amending it in final tonight, because I, I think you've missed that step.
So we shouldn't have amended it either? It shouldn't have even been before, so that's what I'm confused on. Mr. Scarlett made an amendment, now he's saying it shouldn't be here.
No, had it been amended, it would have sent, it was short-circuited and sent it back to the regional planning commission.
Who was, uh, next?
I yield, Mr. Chairman. I yield.
If he yields, it's run.
Mr. Coleman? Simple question. Can we legally vote to kill it tonight?
I, I think no, because the cities never did consider it.
So we shouldn't even be talking about it.
I, I don't think that's probably before you.
What's the pleasure of the committee, poet? Do we have a motion on the floor?
I'll do that in February.
Do I hear a motion to send it on?
Well, I don't think we need a motion.
Really, I think we can just send it, there's really nothing that it needs. I was on, I was on the wire over half of this, so it was news to me. So we're up to speed. Let's just move right along to resolution 2023-62, that was the best, the B-E-S-S, A-1 to I-2 zone. That was Mr. Brooks?
Uh, I, I think we're in the same situation here, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Seals, has this resolution gone before the city planning commissions for consideration? Okay, so
We'll affect at least right.
I affect, okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next on the agenda, we have new business. We have a lot of surplus resolutions, how do y'all want to take them?
Take them all.
We have a motion on the floor to take them all, everybody good to the back?
Yep.
Is there a question or comment? Not hearing any, all surplus resolutions? Passes sixteen zero. Next, we move right along to other resolutions. We have resolution 2023-57, rezoning of property A-1 to I-1. Is there a motion on the floor? Is that a motion on the floor? We got to have a motion in a second, then we can talk. I'm not seeing it. There it is, I got it now. John Neil Scarlett made a motion, it's safety of Veroni Coleman. First comment be Ms. Katie Huffaker.
Okay. You probably think this job's pretty easy up here, but times like this, it's pretty difficult. And this meeting has been on my heart for months, because the votes have been challenging for me to decide. So as Mr. Brunner said, he was kind enough to show me his shop with several inches of ice and snow on the ground Sunday afternoon. He almost fell, could have gotten hurt, and I appreciate him showing it to me. In my opinion, Mr. Brunner has a low-impact manufacturing shop, is providing good jobs with insurance and benefits, is, is proud of the Strawberry Plains community, and is trying to make a positive impact economically and by ser- serving others in the area. He's followed all of our zoning rules and reached out to the Economic Alliance, as well as other agencies in the area. It's my understanding from Mr. Brunner that he can't be zoned A-1 to get his loan, he just has to be zoned in compliance with Jefferson County zoning for his loan. And I know in our work session, people ask if you could get an A-1 variance, and I was told by legal, that's not an option. was told by legal that's not an option either. He stated in our work session that he's not opposed to requesting a rezone when we have a newer zoning category that's appropriate for his type of business. I haven't heard anyone complain of the type of business he wants on his property, but I've heard lots of complaints about the zoning. I believe he's a good neighbor to the area, both as a resident and a business owner, is providing good jobs with low impact on neighboring properties. Also feel jobs make a community healthier, and he's helping make a positive difference with jobs. Because I do not want to see his business suffer while we revise our zoning, I'm supporting his zoning request. I'm also asking our two county commissioners on the planning commission to please add a new zoning category such as C-three for businesses such as his as soon as possible. And I'm asking the other commissioners on here, or I'm challenging us to come up with a solution quickly for this, for the community. We do have the ability and the authority to add new zoning categories, as does the planning commission, and I believe the county commission and planning commission can work together to create a good solution for this issue. But as, I'm also worried, because his job is based on contracts, I want him to be successful as soon as possible. And I have no doubt, I believe Mr. Brunner's intentions are good on the zoning, and I believe once we get our solution resolved, that he'll come back to us and ask for a rezoning. And that's why I'm supporting this vote for him tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had, after the work session, I had asked to have C-three be put on the agenda, and it was not. I once again asked to have it put on the agenda tonight by suspending the rules, and that failed. So I guess come April, we can talk about it then. Uh, Mr. Brunner, I apologize that your county has failed you like this. You should have never been put in this position, sir. Um, I cannot support the I-one, uh, and I do intend to, uh, to bring forth C-three, both on planning commission and here at county commission. I yield, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brooks?
Mr. Brunner, when you came to my store that I run in Strawberry Plains, it was you. I'd like to see it succeed, I'd like to see you succeed. This is not personal at all, and I tell you, I would not hamper you going to that board. But you had to go in front of it. If you recall, I never said a word how I would vote on county commission, and what would make you think I would vote for this, I don't know. It is about zoning. I'd like to ask the county attorney to come to the podium and let us know if I'm his neighbor and he gets...
Mr. Brooks, talk into the microphone, please.
If I'm his neighbor and he gets it rezoned to I-one tonight, what do I do tomorrow if the other neighbor wants to sell and change theirs to I-two, I-one?
Are you asking, the first question is, what can, you said for the neighbors, with respect, if it's zoned I-one?
Sure.
Well, the, the, the deal is, I think, and we've had a, a, a discussion a few times about this, is you need to understand that you guys, well, county commission does not zone the use. You've zoned the land. When you zon the land, when you zon the land, any, any use that's permitted in that particular zone can be used. It, it's not just, um, I want to zone, I'll zone I-one if you do X. It is, you're zoned I-one. So any, any of those uses that are permitted in I-one are permitted. I think that would be the answer to the first question.
Okay.
With respect to the second question on the, the, the rezoning, um, I'll, I'll just talk briefly about challenges to rezoning and just get right to your question, is that those are all fact-based determinations. Uh, if somebody were to initiate some kind of action against any rezoning request that you all do, those are all based on facts, something that I couldn't, you know, tell you without knowing each and every fact. And then there's lawyers that are in this room and lawyers that are not in this room that would disagree with me, and half of them wouldn't, half of them wouldn't. But what I would tell you is, is it easier, maybe, maybe the question is, is it easier to rezone adjacent properties to I-one once it is zoned I-one? The short answer is yes. Is that once there is a, and obviously like a commercial footprint, or even an agricultural footprint, uh, or an industrial footprint adjoining properties, obviously, one of the factors that courts consider as to whether or not a rezoning request was, was spotzoned or not is how close are you to I-one? And, uh, if you're adjoining I-one, it's just an easier legal process if it's challenged with respect to I-one. Or actually, any zone, not just I-one.
Would someone that's I-one, let's say the mines that was there before we had the zoning codes, would, would that come into play? Well, they're close to the mines. Well, what ain't now then?
The question would be, the question would be, um, with respect to, again, it's a fact-based determination. Like, let's say hypothetically that you zone a parcel C-two, and there, a lawsuit results, where it's a lawsuit against, uh, initiated by the county, or by somebody against the county, or by adjoining property owner against the rezoning, whatever that might be. A court goes through the process of evaluating whether or not, uh, the zoning, your determination here is arbitrary or capricious. Did it have some basis in the law, or in fact, fact and the law to support that particular decision? One of the factors they look at is infrastructure, how close are you to other assemblies on properties, what's the character of the community? There's a whole myriad of factors that a court would consider with respect of whether or not that zoning was arbitrary or capricious. I will go ahead and tell you, uh, that I have tried, uh, a lot of zoning suits, not just for Jefferson County, for property owners and for, for public entities. And I can tell you that one of the hardest things to do if you're challenging legislation in zoning is to overturn that. It just, it's one of the hardest things to do in the law. Uh, and for, and I would get in again to the, just the legal technicalities with you about why that's so hard, but, uh, courts like to leave in place what legislators have considered in the past. And so it's very, very hard to overturn those particular decisions regardless of what they are. They have been done. I mean, I've been, been involved in lawsuits where we've challenged those type of things and won, but I'm just saying it's very hard to do. So what's that, if there's a, if there's a fairly debatable basis, or any basis that would support that particular piece of legislation, then it's, the court most, more likely than not is going to uphold it. So, but those two, I know the two questions you had, I went far afield on that last one, but I just wanted y'all to understand the process.
I think a lot of the problem with people in the sixth district, because no one has a problem with Mr. Brunner, I don't either. I want him to be able to do what he wants to do. Are you a member of the Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Brunner?
No.
I just joined, so if I did it, anybody can do it, trust me. They're out here tonight. So the citizens, I believe, that I also represent, along with ransom, they want to make sure this is not a Trojan horse, if you will, to get it inside something, and then, as you put it, make it easier to make the others own something else. So if we were given a solution to fix it without changing it to I at all, I think everyone should, uh, say, well, that, that'll work for Brunner and his people and everybody, and we don't have to change nothing to I, anything? That doesn't seem to be what they want. The last time we fought I and changed it, they almost changed the state law for the courts. And we fought that too. And you have to understand, it's real soon after that battle, Mr. Brunner, and it's a lot of pro slaughterhouse people behind you. I wasn't for it, but that don't mean I don't like you and want you to do business in there, and you have as much right as anyone. But if it were, it's not about moral, or good, or bad for the community, or what, it's, it's the, you know, I don't know what we can do to fix that. I'm sorry they failed you. Again, they're all appointed, not ones elected. And then you got to look at the bigger boards. Remember the whole thing about the calendar and the go of those that make the go, have to go and make the rules? Good luck, Mr. Brunner. I hope we can solve your problem without destroying other problems, causing other problems. I do.
Mr. Blavos, you give a vote.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Reed?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I was wondering if, uh, Mr. Hurley, could I ask him a question?
Sure, if Mr. Hurley wants to come to the microphone.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hurley, when you spoke, and I appreciate what you said, and I want Mr. Brunner to have his business, but my concern is, you've heard from me, where I came from, my old hometown, you've listened to Ms. Knight, uh, and evidently you've dealt with a lot of cases. Once, uh, I-one comes into the picture and we make it an I-one, how hard is it to keep another one from coming in? Because I think that's going to get a lot of attention when that happens, and people will want to come in with different things that I-one accepts. And I'm not trying to drag this on, I just want to make sure that everyone understands that I'm sincere when I have said that my whole hometown, where I lived at, is now commercial, uh, and industrial is right down the road, and it was a beautiful county. It's not beautiful anymore. And I want to keep a lot of Jefferson County beautiful at the same time, not just spotzoned because of other people that want it a certain way. We need to do it the best way that takes care of the citizen and takes care of helping Jefferson County grow. And, Mr. Brunner, I'm sorry, sir, I want you to have your business, you most likely will, but I, I can't accept it because we got other solutions that we could do, and we could do them quickly. And, and I believe we could do that. I yield.
To answer the question, first let me say I believe Mr. Drennan has done a very good job in describing the legal implications of what you're being asked to do tonight. I fully agree with him that in the event that you make the decision to, to, uh, have this special use, uh, for Mr. Brunner, uh, converting it to an industrial use, it will absolutely make the path easier for other parties in that vicinity, adjacent properties and/or, uh, closely, uh, situated properties to seek industrial zoning, and I believe it would make it more difficult, uh, for the, uh, commission to turn them down. I believe it would make it almost impossible for the courts to then rule that this commission has acted arbitrarily and capriciously, and so allowing him to have an industrial use. It's my understanding that he was told that the industrial use solution was the only solution that he had. And that may be true with your existing, uh, with the existing criteria that you have, but there are multiple counties within punting distance of Jefferson County that have, uh, zoning ordinances in place that provide other solutions for Mr. Brunner without opening the Pandora's Box of industrial uses.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Mr. Blavos?
I agree with Katie.
In the microphone, sir.
I agree with Katie and the thought processes she's put through this, and we've said to all the people, I'm sorry, it's right there, whatever, I got you. But we've heard from all the people that were against it, but I would just like to ask, Mr. Brunner, the people that support you, would you please stand up? Nobody wants the I-two, I under, or I-one, I'm sorry. I understand that, but to punish a gentleman that's got good paying jobs, bringing money into the county, I, I don't understand it. I really don't.
Can I say something?
I'm sorry, you can't right now, he has a floor.
So I'll yield to Janet.
Given all the information that we've received tonight, especially from the attorneys, is there any way at all that we could or would reconsider the C-three that we refused to vote on at the beginning? Because this C-three would allow for machine shops, and he could get his bank financing.
Mr. Brunner? Hold up, Ms. Janet's got the floor. Do you yield?
That's my question, can we?
I think the answer to that would be no. Hold up, Marcus. Right, right here, right now, I will take the liberty as chairman to say that we have to reflect on, in this situation, the rules that were in place when Mr. Brunner came in and applied for a rezoning. Okay, no matter what we do tonight in this situation, it is after the fact of Mr. Brunner. Okay, to answer a question that was brought up just a while ago, that it, it can make an avenue for more I-ones, no matter what, anybody wants to rezon zone, it comes right back to this courthouse to answer your question. It will be right back in front of these commissioners here, though it be you or anyone else. That is what the rule says. So therefore, Mr. Brunner's got to abide by the rule he was instructed right then. You, 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 you can't change a zone right now and regroup it and say, hey, you know, we're, we're going to apply this. No, the, the ballgame has done started, just like the battery facilities. We made some changes, we voted some things in under legal challenge. I'm sorry, it won't hold water because the ballgame has done started. That's, that, that's the rules that they plan by. Just adding that out there to answer some questions. We shall proceed to vote if everybody is in.
Do the attorneys agree with that?
I call, uh, what is it? I, I challenge what you're saying, because I want to hear from our attorney. I want to hear from our attorney.
Could we do a C-two or a C-three variance that would allow, we, we tried to bring one up tonight, um, it was passed out to us, we read over it, and it allows for machine shops. Can we get this in and then allow it for Mr. Brunner?
The, the, the short answer is, it's a, it's a, it's a new zone that you would be creating, not necessarily a variant, not trying to get technical, but it's a new zone. Uh, my opinion would be no, not based on the status of tonight, since it was not added to the agenda and, and the commission didn't add it. Not to say that you could not do it, um, whether that be at a special call meeting, remember, as long as you follow the process.
Who would stop us?
It would be the C, the C-three.
Mr. Drennan has the floor, Mr. Blavos?
The C-three would have to go through that process. You would recommend that to, you would recommend that to the RPC, the, your county.
What about C-two? We already have it.
You could change the uses, same, same thing, it's an amendment, it has to, it still has to go through that process. Let's, let's say, for instance, at your next meeting, or whether you have a special call meeting, you say this, we want to add machine shops to the C-two zone. And that proposed amendment has to go to the county regional planning commission, then the municipal planning commission's in back here for a final vote after they recommend approval, denial, or suggestion.
Is machine shops in I-one? I didn't see the word machine shop in I-one.
No, I think that was the, as I understand it, that was, was that...
He really doesn't have a zone.
Yeah, it's... Manufacturing. Manufacturing.
They determined it was manufacturing.
That's what that was. One person at a time.
Is that right, the BCA?
Yes.
Yeah, well, they're always right. So in, in other words, probably one of their pow, one of, one of the powers pursuant to the statute that they're given is to interpret your zoning ordinance as to, for instance, you can't list every possible use, it's impossible, that would fit in a particular zone. So they're given the authority pursuant to statute to interpret that, to say, this use is close enough to the uses that are permitted in C-two or whatever, that it belongs there. They, they've done it since we've had zoning in August of ninety-eight. That's been part of their job duties. If they determine that this particular use belongs in I-one because it's manufacturing, then the only, the next step is litigation. It's not necessarily back to this body because this body doesn't have, it's not a court of appeals, you can't overturn them. The only thing you can do is amend the zoning ordinance, but you just have to follow the process, whether it be at a special call meeting with the appropriate notice, and you would propose that resolution, it goes to the RPC, then it goes to the municipal, then back to you for a final vote. And by the way, you can ignore every regional planning commission suggestion that they make. You can recommend, you can ignore their approval, their denial, and vote however you want. You are the legislative body. It's just that process was set up by our legislator that you have to follow, which is that recommendation process. You can do it, but you just have to follow the process. I don't think you can do it tonight.
Thank you.
Somebody new that hasn't already spoken. Mr. Blavos, make it short.
Mr. Brunner, the reason I voted on the other property you, you brought up earlier when you were talking at Whittaker is for the very reason you're this. That's why. It's the closest I, industrial, you said, one or whatever miles down the road. This, this is why.
Mr. Brooks, let's finish it up here.
You didn't want to spend the evening with me, Mr. Chairman?
No.
Okay, well. Mr. Drennan? Sorry. Sorry. Could we go ahead and have a special, could we go ahead and ask for a special call meeting to review the C three?
Yeah, the special call meeting statutes, you can, there's a petition that, I think it's eleven, petition the chair, although the chair can call one at the request. I think, I don't know that you all have local rules that actually address special call sessions. My experience in the past is, whatever that process has been, it's never been a hard one. You know, if you want one, I think you could ask the chairman to call one and or follow that process with a petition. And there's different ones, like, if it's an emergency, which this would be, there's different processes. He's correct, the chair can ask the mayor to call one, or eleven, they can petition the chair and they call.
Thank you.
Mr. Solomon?
I call for a question.
We have a call for a question? So, we are going to proceed to vote? If you are for Mr. Brunner, vote yes. You're dead. I call him, he's dead.
Mr. Chairman, that's not what we're voting on. We're voting on rezoning, not whether or not we're for Mr. Brunner.
Exactly.
I thought we were fucking on the resolution. We have eleven yeses, four noes, one abstain. This deal passed. Next, we have resolution twenty twenty-three dash five-eight, rezoning property A one to C two. Is there a motion on the floor? Have a motion? Have second? We proceed to vote, there's not a question or comment?
I have a question, I want to make sure what resolution I'm voting on here. A one to C two for what?
Hold on a second. Mr. Seals?
This property's on twenty-five seventy, that should've been zoned commercial in nineteen ninety-eight, they missed it. It's got a little communication building there.
Gotcha.
They want to do a real estate office in there, and it ain't zoned yet.
Should I abstain?
No, you should.
Anyone else question or comment, we proceed to vote. We have fourteen yeses and one no, one abstain. Resolution passes. Next, we have short-term rental ordinance.
That's what I wanted to say, the public service.
And you would like to send this to public service? Is there a question or comment? Consider it sent. Announcements, do not forget that your statement of interest has to be turned in by the end of the month. All commissioners need to turn in their statement of interest. Do not forget that. Anything else, we have a motion on the floor, the chairman, we have a second, Mr. Blair.